Everyone, I will call this Tigard City Council and Town Center Development Agency Meeting to Order. City Recorder Craigor, please call roll.
Counselor Robbins.
Here.
Counselor Slack.
Here.
Counselor Shaw.
Here.
Counsel President Wolf.
Here.
Counselor Godusi.
Present.
Counselor who?
Here.
Mayor Lube.
Here. Thank you. If everyone will please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We will move on to public comment. Anyone who wants to provide public comment by phone or video, please log in or call now to get into the queue. Anyone present in the room wishing to comment, there is a sign up sheet at the entrance of the room if you want to run back there and sign your name. Anyone who wants to comment on items four through nine, please wait for those items and not the general public comment. We did not receive any written public comments by noon yesterday, and we do have one person signed up to speak in person. Welcome up, Brian Conroy. Please come on up, and you have two minutes. Yeah, come on up, come on up to the front. Yeah, and then wherever you want to sit, there's a microphone, and there's just a button in front of it, and you'll turn it on and it'll turn green.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you.
Oh, I just needed to turn the microphone on. Yeah, there's a button. There you go. Thank you.
Testing. I could summarize it, but I think it'd be easier if I just read it because I'm not a public speaker, so it's under two minutes. So, "I'm here to ask why we would allow an organization like Clean Water Services to raise our water rates. I'm going to assume that most of you have read the reporting on Clean Water Services over the last few months. As a refresher, for some reason, in 2016, CWS decided to establish a subsidiary business to provide self-insurance. The name of their new business was Clearwater Insurance Company. I wonder if the creation of this subsidiary was ever audited to see if this was a good use of public dollars as opposed to buying insurance on the market like every other business does. I seriously doubt there was an audit." Clean Water Insurance Company's first order business was to incorporate in Hawaii, apparently for the sole purpose of establishing a lavish tropical location where CWS management and some Washington County Commissioners could schedule grandiose week-long meetings, substitute annual junkets, to these exotic Hawaiian locations, traveling in first class and staying in spacious top-dollar suites. All this and flights and hotels and also expensive meals and entertainment were all expensed and covered by all of us lowly rate payers. This has been going on since 2016. Nine years at ratepayer expense, emboldened by their successful embezzlements of our public funds, the cost of these junkets have gone up notably every year. Suffice to say that over the years, hundreds of thousands of dollars have been funneled to these junkets from ratepayers' pockets. Finally caught in their corrupt plan, there has been a small reorganization of management, and perhaps some auditing is now planned. The CEO is now gone, but not before reportedly threatening to sue Washington County Commissioners if they speak badly of her. Nervous about being drawn into the controversy, Washington County cut her a check for reported $130,000 as she exited just under, just under her $400,000 a year salary position that will now kick out $147,000 in purse payments annually for the rest of her life. Please note that the reported, that reportedly the Hawaiian junket is still planned for this year. As a Tigard citizen of 30 years and a water rate payer, I am asking why in God's name were all the executives at CWS and Washington County silent and thus complicit in this scheme? I call not only for the rejection of any proposed increase in water bills, but for the full investigation into Clean Water Services and also accountability for those involved, and complete restructuring or elimination of the agency if necessary."
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Mr. Vang, do we have any phone callers in the queue or anyone wishing to testify by video today?
I'm done at the moment.
Thank you so much. We will move on to community updates, and we will start with our Police Chief and Police Department report. Welcome, Chief McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I have a few things to cover with you this evening, and the first thing I'd like to talk about is some storage unit burglaries that we've noticed. So, on the strategic dashboard, you may have noticed that it showed that burglaries in the other category were up 175% for May, and I'm disappointed to actually say that that number is probably actually still very low because we had a great number of storage units that were broken into during the month of May. The good news is, is in cooperation with Hillsborough and Salem Police Departments, we actually have identified who those suspects are. A Hillsborough police officer spotted them in the, in the act out there, got into a pursuit. We don't generally pursue, they get very dangerous, so that broke off. The following night, one of the, one of our officers here in Tigard also encountered the same vehicle, got into a short pursuit, and stopped that. But we got enough information that our crime analyst was able to identify who these people were. So, now our Commercial Crimes Unit is working with the Salem Police Department to see if we can, if we can get some more resolution. We have recovered a bunch of property, which is why we know that there are a lot of unreported storage units that have been broken into. So, what I'd like to ask the community is, if you have a storage unit in Tigard or anywhere in Washington County, go check on it and make sure that it is secure. If it hasn't, or if it's not secure and it's been broken into and you haven't reported, please reach out to us and let us know. That would be very important for us so that we can actually help get some resolution because we have some property that we've recovered that we can't identify who it belongs to. So, that's a, that was one spot on there that I wanted to bring up. Can we go to the next slide, please? I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the community events that we did during the month of May. As you can see over there on the left-hand side, there's quite a few, and the reason I bring this up is just to kind of talk about that community engagement piece that we're working on in the Police Department. And one of the things that we're really trying to start doing, and you'll probably notice this when you're out at a lot of these community events yourselves, because I know, and thank you very much to all of you that, that attend a lot of the events that we're at, you'll see different people from the Police Department, different faces, and that's something that we're trying to do intentionally. And part of it is, most of you have met Maddie, our Community Engagement Program Coordinator. She has done such a great job of recruiting people to come help her at events. She now often has a waiting list of people to help her with events, which is really awesome. And a couple of weeks ago, she and I went to a community engagement conference and learned about what are some strategies we can use to get better doing community engagement. And I'm happy to report, we're doing a lot of that stuff already, and we're doing a lot of things well. And she and I spent a lot of time talking to people from all around the country, going, "What? You do what?" And they were really excited to hear some of the things that we're doing here in Tigard, some of the simple little things like going out and doing popsicles in the park with kids in the summer, and some of the things that just really resonated with other communities that we're doing that they're going to also use. And we, we brought a few nuggets home with us, too, that we're going to start using here as well. And then we have a few upcoming events that you can see there on the right-hand side, and that's not an inclusive list of everything that's going on this month for us. Next slide, please. I wanted to show this because it shows five years of calls for service, and you can see for May, it's up and down for the dispatch calls for service. But the, the thing I wanted to notice, and this is something we've been talking about, on the right-hand side of the slide there, you see how year over year, we're generally seeing a pretty steady increase in self-initiated activity. And what that means is that officers are getting more time to be proactive, and they're taking that opportunity to be more proactive. So, we're starting to see that. I have a couple of theories I'm not quite ready to talk about yet that are not just because maybe they have more time, but I still want to prove some of those. But I think we're starting to see that increase continue because of some of the things we're doing internally that are also giving folks an opportunity to be a little more motivated. Next slide, please. On this slide, this is part of the stop data that I mentioned, either last month or the month before. So, the two bars on the right that are so tall there, they are speeding. Well, no, the one on the far right is, it's called failed to obey a traffic control device. So, running stop signs, running stoplights, that is, that is the highest in the city. The next one is speeding. And as you can see, the numbers go down pretty drastically from there. And I know the numbers at the bottom don't mean anything to you, but they mean things to me because that is the, the state statute for whatever the traffic violation is for those. And so, for example, the first, you know, going from right to left, which I know is unconventional, but that's how we're going to do it this time, failed to obey a traffic control device, so you're running your stoplights and stop signs, speeding. Then the third one over is driving while suspended, which we would find out when we've stopped someone for something else. The next one after that is improper display, and then right next to that is failed to renew. Both of those are registration-related. So, one of the things we heard about in the news a lot about a year ago was how many people were not renewing the registration on their vehicles. So, you can see that those are pretty high on the list. And then going down from there, you have things like cell phone, U-turns, or illegal U-turns, failed to drive within a lane, which often is something we stop people for when we suspect maybe of driving under the influence. And then driving uninsured and no operator's license rounds out the rest of the list there. So, and driving uninsured and no operator's license would also be something we'd find out from a different, from making a traffic stop for a violation, not something we actually would make a traffic stop for. So, you can see that kind of shares, that's, and that's over the last year, from the end of May, last year, to the end of May this year. So, yes, Mayor.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Can they be, can one call be in two categories?
It could.
So, if you started with speeding and then they were suspended, then that means they're in two.
Yes. So, there could be two, there could be two or three violations potentially that are out of one traffic stop, yes. Absolutely. And then the last thing that I wanted to, to touch on, the mayor had asked about some, some crashes that we had had at Gardie and 99, basically. And let me find my notes here. So, we had two that involved pedestrians in that, in that general area. One of them was in July of '22. The other one was just in April of this year. And both of those, it, what we determined out of the investigation is that it wasn't necessarily aggressive driver factors. In fact, in both of these, the drivers talked about how they had sun glare and they couldn't see as they turned into that, turned onto Gardie or came across Gardie. So, one of them was a left turn from northbound 99 to go westbound on Gardie. The other one was coming straight across. One of them, we know for sure, was a pedestrian factor. The, there was a witness that said that the, it appeared that the gentleman stumbled into the roadway and was struck by the vehicle, and again, the driver was, talked about having some sun glare. And that was the one from, from April. And then the one in July of '22, the, the witnesses didn't see the actual crash itself. They just saw the aftermath of it, but the driver also indicated that they had, had sun glare, and it was unclear as to whether or not there was, the pedestrian was in the crosswalk, but the driver did have the green light. So, the driver was, was progressing as they legally were allowed to. So, the pedestrian was clearly in the roadway in an area where they, they shouldn't have been at that point in time. So, I think that it's fair to say that these are both horribly tragic events. The question that, that I've been asked is, was it roadway design that played into those? And I honestly can say, I, I don't know. What I can say is that sun glare definitely was a factor in both of those, and through my experience in my career, I've seen multiple times on both Gardie and McDonald Street where sun glare has played an impact in crashes and pedestrian incidents in particular. So, unfortunately, there may be limited things we can do in terms of design when you're talking about environmental factors like sun glare. And it may well just be that these are horribly tragic accidents, and that actually, in at least one of them, and potentially both of them, it was a pedestrian factor that played into the, the fact that it ended up being a fatal crash because they were in a part of the roadway where they shouldn't have been at that point in time. So, I wanted to circle back with you, Mayor, because you had asked about those, and we did do the research to see, you know, is there anything that we could definitively come up with? And really, it's, it really boils down to environmental factors, and in these two cases, sun glare definitely played a factor. And I actually went through and looked at both of the reports, and, and the drivers both said that that was something that, that impacted them at that point. And that's all I have for this week, or this month, if there's any questions.
Questions? Counselor Slack, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief. Just thinking about the fact that it's June and that one year ago when I was appointed to council, we had a lot of comments about post-Fourth of July fireworks concerns, something my family likes to remind me about since they sat through all of that public comment. I just wanted to proactively ask what the Police Department's plans are for enforcing firework laws in the city of Tigard in the next few weeks.
Yep. Happy to talk about that. We've, we've already had that discussion internally. And what we do is fireworks that are illegal are, in the state of Oregon, are illegal in Tigard as well. So, one thing that we have done in the past, and I would encourage the community to also do this, if you have a neighbor that you know likes to light off illegal fireworks, go ahead and be proactive and give us a call ahead of time. We'll actually go and talk to that person, and we give them a warning ahead of time. We like to let them know, hey, the Fourth of, Fourth of July isn't like a day off from, you know, illegal fireworks. It's, they're illegal 365 days a year. There are plenty of legal fireworks that you can go by, but the stuff that launches into the air and explodes, goes, you know, with big booms, those are generally going to be illegal. We have a nice long list that we provide to our officers that helps make it easier to identify those. If we catch somebody with illegal fireworks, we will seize those. The Tuauton Valley Fire and Rescue helps us get rid of those. So, we will seize illegal fireworks. We will cite people. The municipal code is very clear, and thank you, we, we have a nice tool that we can use. It carries a hefty fine if you get cited under the municipal code. So, we are trying to be proactive about those things, and especially if it's, if something's brought to our attention ahead of time. And then also, you'll start to see some reminders, if you will, in social media about use of fireworks in the, in the coming weeks.
Counselor who?
Thank you, Mayor and Chief. Thank you for the report on the Gardie and 99. I, I got a communication from a former planning commissioner who lives around there, and I forwarded that, his email to you and the, the city manager, and he was complaining about, you know, people, he lives on a 20-mile, 20 mile per hour street, and he's complaining about people driving very fast. But unrelated to that, he, he also talked about the two deaths over there, and he was wondering if the fact that when you turn left on 99, there are two lanes, and you go to Gardie two lane and quickly turn to one lane, maybe that's the, we're all speculating, maybe that's, that forced people to maybe feel like they need to compete with each other, to merge. So, maybe that, that's a design flaw, but I told him, I really don't know. But what I do know is unfortunately, up today, our roads are designed to move car faster, and that may not be the best way of designing our road because personally, I think we should need to design our city for moving people, not for moving cars. So, that, so I appreciate you talk, mentioning, mentioning about the, the investigation. I will convey that information to him. Another thing is that he being a former planning commissioner, and he was, he was shy about contacting me, that I knew him for many years, about he thinks it's bothering us to, to let us know that. And I told him, no, this is no bother. So, the point is that there are a lot more committee member out there who are feeling frustrated with this traffic concern, and they just don't, they just may not feel comfortable talking with us. So, so, in my opinion, it's a, it's a, it's a very serious concern for our community, but, but thank you for that report. So, thank you.
Yes, absolutely. You, you know, your point about his, his street, I, yeah, I did, I did look at the email there. And one of the problems that we see, especially like in that area, and his street has become a massive cut through for people trying to cut through and avoid that traffic on Highway 99. That definitely is, that's definitely the case. I mean, it's not a scientific study, but I can go down there and sit there and tell you that there's plenty of people cutting through. As far as the, the two left turn lanes, I, I can go back and tell you that that intersection at 99 and Gardie was a bad intersection before it was rebuilt. We had concerns about the, the way it was being rebuilt in terms of a traffic safety standpoint when it was being reconstructed. We had the ability to sit there and be able to do traffic enforcement at the intersection before it was rebuilt, just like we did at 99 and Hall. And when the intersections were redone, there's literally nowhere that we can, we can actually park. Our motorcycles can do it, but they kind of have to be on the sidewalk. It's unsafe to try and get out in traffic, so it makes it very difficult to do traffic enforcement at those intersections as well. So, with a difficult design and then not having the ability to do effective enforcement there, it makes it even more difficult to try and make an impact on people that may be competing for space or that are trying to be driving a little bit more aggressively. So, we then have that conflict between vehicles and pedestrians that we're, that we're trying so hard to mitigate. So, you're right. I think that's a, that the design of that intersection is, is challenging, and it was before it was even redone. But you're right, it was designed to help improve traffic flow is, is what, is what the design of all of the intersection rebuilds on 99 were done when they did them a number of years ago.
Chief, I just want to follow up on that and sort of talk publicly about a conversation you and I had also about our red light cameras. And every time I actually go in that intersection, I always think that there is a red light camera there because it feels like one that needs one, but at the time when we requested them, there wasn't enough data. Is there an interest in looking again to potentially, if it now qualifies, to help try to control the intersection?
Yeah, Mayor, the, we're working on getting our new vendor online currently. Once the new vendor's online and we're able to get started in the other intersections we have, that's the first intersection we want to look at in potentially adding photo enforcement for the very reasons that I mentioned. It's difficult for us to actually effectively work enforcement, and we know it's a huge problem with people running lights. You can only drive through it one time when the traffic is even at moderate flow, and you will see somebody run a light there. So, yes, it's, it's top of the list for, for consideration for expansion of the program. Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Shaw?
Yeah, thank you. And I have the opportunity to drive through that intersection quite often, and that glare is detrimental.
Yeah.
And it's every single night. So, if we are going to put red light cameras, if that's even a consideration, we'd have to solve that environmental problem.
Yes.
Because oftentimes, you cannot see. So, I'm sure technology, there's a way to do that, but just in defense of a lot of drivers out there, it's a problem. Thank you.
I mean, potentially, maybe it's working with ODOTs that have a delay, right? Like, of so many, looking forward to lots of different, look, you know, find ways to find that
Absolutely.
intersection safer. Any additional questions for the Chief? All right. Thank you so much, Chief.
You're welcome.
Our next update is from the Tigard Area Chamber of Commerce, and tonight, we have our chamber membership engagement coordinator, Ainsley Adams, to give the update. Welcome, Ainsley.
Hi, everyone. My name's Ainsley. Normally, this update is given by our board chair, Tom Engel, but he's out sick today, so I'm just filling in. So, first, thank you to Mayor Lube for joining our CEO, Megan DeSalvo, on a tour of Fots Steel yesterday. That was incredible, and we look forward to many more tours in the future. For Leadership Tigard, we held our Public Safety and Judicial System Day this month. So, thank you to TVFNR, Tigard Police, Washington County Sheriff, and Washington County Consolidated Communications Agency for welcoming our class for a very impactful day. The Leadership Tigard Class of 2025 has officially graduated this evening. Thank you to Broadway Rose for partnering with us on this important and impactful program. And then applications for Leadership Tigard Class of 2026 are now open. Our CEO and staff are currently working with TTSD and the Tuauton Chamber on revamping the Work Ready Program to better serve our youth and support the business community. So, please be on the lookout for more information about that program revamp coming soon. We're currently working with both House Majority Leader, Representative Ben Bowman, and We're currently working with both House Majority Leader, Representative Ben Bowman, and Senator Courtney Neron-Misslyn to set up ongoing listening sessions for Tigard businesses. So be on the lookout for those dates coming soon. I know Senator Courtney Neron-Misslyn's will be in, the first one will be in July. So we're very excited about that. The Tigard Farmers Market is bustling with fresh produce, artisan goods, and exceptional hot food vendors. It has something for everyone. Please be sure to stop by the market on Sundays, 9:00 AM to 1:30 through October in Universal Plaza. This Friday, please join us at the Tigard Festival of Balloons. It is our largest networking event of the year. We have eight plus chambers and nonprofits joining us this year. It's our biggest one to date and you won't want to miss it. And in general, the festival of balloons is this weekend, so we're very excited. Our annual meeting is being held in place of Good Morning Tigard Thursday, June 26th at 7:30 AM. Please join us as we welcome our new board chair, Sarah Tanner, and a few new board members. And then I just have a few save the dates for you all. I already went over that June 20th date, but this Friday is our annual Tigard Festival of Balloons Multi-Chamber Networking. June 26th, we have our Tigard Chamber of Commerce Annual Meeting. July 10th, we have a Good Morning Tigard and ribbon cutting for Tigard Pediatric Dentistry and they are a TIF grant recipient. We're very excited to celebrate them. On July 11th, we have the Tigard Chamber of Commerce 70th Birthday Celebration at Summer Lake Park from 4:30 to 6:30 PM. And then on July 31st, we are doing a Good Morning Tigard ribbon cutting for Northwest Accent at her new Main Street location. Lastly, September 24th, from 9:30 AM to 2:30 PM, we have the State of Business 2025 and Small Business Expo, Shaping Tigard's Future Innovation, Investment, and Inclusive Growth. We're very excited about this annual event and program and we encourage you all to come out for that. Please follow us on LinkedIn, Instagram, and Facebook for the most up-to-date information on what we have going on. And that's it for us.
Thank you, Ainsley.
Yes.
Appreciate you being here. I want to congratulate Counselor Shaw and Counselor Gudusi on the Leadership Tigard graduation today. If you'd like to, you shared at the graduation what was the most impact that you had, if you wanted to take the opportunity and share that with the community as well.
Just finding out how many other nonprofits there are here in our community. I'm with Healthy Oregon and just being able to not just build those relationships, but see some of the things that we're doing here has been great.
My favorite part was our class's community service project. We ran a diaper drive. Our goal was to raise $6,000 and we've raised over $7,000. So that's 20,000 diapers that are going to local families in need through local nonprofits that we are partnering with. And also, it was mentioned earlier, but FOT Steel is a really, really cool place to tour. Highly recommend. I'm glad the mayor got to go see it. That was my other favorite part. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ainsley?
No.
Thank you so much, Ainsley.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
The next updates we have are our council liaison reports. I think last time we started with Counselor Gudusi, so we can start on the other end and work our way down. Counselor Robbins?
Yes, thank you. Stay, stay on. I attended the Committee, Committee for Community Enga- g- gosh. I attended the [laughing] Committee for Community Engagement Meeting. It was a very, very packed meeting full of a lot of good things. We had presentations about all of the great events that are happening in Tigard this summer that we're sponsoring, including the Tigard Balloon Festival this weekend, the Pride Festival next weekend, free weddings all month, lots of good things going on. And then we also had the Enviro Issues, people come and present the most recent findings in their equity studies and had a lot of questions that actually I was supposed to present as well on the budget, but everything, everything else was so interesting that we pushed me to next month.
Okay, so on May 21st, I attend the CHART meeting. And as, as all you know, the county released their point in time count for 2025. You know, the good news is that the house population now are not the same as those, you know, last year or the year before. But the bad news is that there are more unhoused individuals now than ever. I, you know, it's not, it just also showed that the SH money is so critical in helping us getting people shelter and preventing people from becoming unhoused in the first place. But there are still a lot of work to be done because, you know, this problem is not going away anytime soon. And we, and there are just so many factors, you know, economic factors and, and things like that and housing issue. So, so it's, it's, it's on the county website, so please take a look. They also provide a safe parking update. The two current lots reported no incidents in the past month. And we're, the city is still looking for a third site for its safe parking lot and, and for the, then they create a new category called neutral exit. That means both the program manager and the participant mutually agree that the participant will leave the park, safe parking lot program. So they create a new category for exit. On June 4th, Counselor Shaw and I went down to Salem to meet with several of our state lawmakers and to advocate for heat pump program. And we were good partners. We were together with a bunch of coalitions who found over the state of Oregon, from the city to rural Oregon. And we all talked about how heat pump benefited our community. And thanks to city teammate, they were able to pull together those data for us. The message is that, you know, this year budget's tough, but I think we are requesting them to at least keep the heat pump program on life support because if they totally defund the program, it will be hard to build up the existing program again. So we'll see what happens with the state legislature. Also on the same day, Counselor Shaw and I also, a busy day after the whole day in Salem, we went down, we came for the joint TTAC and TCAC joint meeting. At that meeting, Counselor Shaw can feel in if I missed anything, that we were given a micro transit pilot program from the county. So to me, it's essentially a free Uber program for people to, to be able to connect to different transit center, you know, because our transit doesn't go everywhere. So to me, it's a last mile program. It's a free Uber program. And the county was seek, the first step for the county is to seek community feedback on the scale and the location of the program. We also received a trail system plan update from staff. Phase one is that I think the city is done or almost done with collecting, compiling an inventory of all the trail system in the city, which is quite a bit. And they collected very detailed information, including the slope and the width and the condition of all the trails. And the phase two is to seek community feedback on how, how we want to maintain or even expand the program. The reality is that I didn't know that our trails outside of the, our park system basically currently have no official funding or no, no official budget for maintenance. So, so, you know, if there's no budget for it, you know, they are pretty much just allowed to be deteriorating over time. And, and the council will get a briefing on July 1st, but both members of TC, TTAC and TCAC really expressed strong desire for the city to look into funding methods so we can maintain those trail system outside of the park system. But again, I won't go into detail because we're going to get a briefing on July 1st, but we should expect to get a letter of support from TTAC and TCAC members. They also were briefed on the 72nd Design Project, which we receive briefing at the council. On August 13th, there's a joint TCAC and TTAC tour of project sites around the city. And today, council member just received an invite for that. On June 9th, Counselor Shaw and I attended the TIF Graham meeting and I think I will let him talk about that. And on June 9th, also on June 9th, I attended a PRAB meeting as an alternate for Counselor Gudusi. Again, I received a trail system plan update for the second time. So when it comes to council on July 1st, I'll be really familiar with it when I get a third briefing. Anyway, and, and PRAB members also receive a pub, update for parks and public works. You know, again, there are a bunch of summer activities and this, this Saturday Balloon Festival and Saturday we have Balloon Fest 5K run. And we have the, as our city manager Stockwell mentioned, we have the highest number of registrations so far. I believe Counselor President Wolf and Counselor Shaw and I are both running on Saturday. So if you see us there, please say hi to us. I know.
I'll be cheering on as well.
Yeah. Today I, today I went run for 5K and I proved that I can still do it. So, so I'm ready for, for Saturday. And July, and they also talk about the Park Ranger Program that's kicking off. So the police chief mentioned that our bike, our police cops, police on bike is very popular. And this summer ranger program would just complement our police officers on the trail system. And, and the next PRAB meeting will be July 14th and the member will be touring Tuotin River on kayak. And again, council member received invitation for that meeting. So I'm looking forward to kayaking with, with my fellow council members and PRAB committee members. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Who. We did have a very busy June 4th. I think our educational opportunity to advocate for heat pumps was well received. On behalf of the city, we had some great stories to tell about community members and then also with the transportation and joint downtown meeting together, I think was the first time that had been done. And it was also well received to meet together and talk about issues they had in common. Also like to thank Council President Wolf for her work on the Washington County Policy Advisory Board. And we are going to be renaming that because known as PAB, it didn't really sit well with a lot of folks, but because of your advocacy work, we were able to authorize several different grants, including to the Will and Hearth Funds because of some cost, unexpected costs with some landscaping issues, some water retention issues and others. So we were able to provide those dollars to the Will and Hearth, which of course had its kind of ground opening, well, yeah, ground opening, we'll call it that. There was also to Wood Spring Apartments also had an out of cycle contribution for a very similar escalation of costs that was unexpected due to additional costs of tariffs affecting some of the components of the building. And we had an election for officers and the mayor of Banks is going to be, actually no, I apologize, the city councillor from Sherwood is going to be the chair and I will be the vice chair of PAB moving forward. So again, just want to thank Council President Wolf for all the work you did really laying out the structure and putting in some, I'd say processes in place for ensuring that dollars go to very important housing projects. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Counselor Shaw. And actually, I'll be fairly brief. For my assigned committees, Westside Economic Alliance has a board meeting tomorrow, but I do want to do a shout out to the mayor for participating in the mayor's forum that was on June 12th. It was very well attended, represented cities in Clackamas and Washington County and just really well attended, held at Pearlau in Tuolton. So thank you for that. And let's see, Regional Water Providers Consortium, that was last week. And we had a speaker from Global Shelter USA that really talked about the importance of clean and healthy water in disaster response and really shared some of the tools and equipment they can bring in and assist in areas that really don't have direct access at the time of the disaster. River Grove joined the consortium and we kind of had a legislative update from all things water from their perspective, not necessarily taking positions, but just what's on tap for them, no pun intended, and what they're watching. And I think those, that's good enough for this evening. So thank you.
All right. Since my last update, I attended four meetings as a council liaison. On June 2nd, I attended a meeting of the Planning Commission. The commission received updates and provided feedback on the River Terrace 2.0 Housing Plan, which was the same presentation to the council, or that the council received last week. There was also an update on the kickoff of Tigard Home. There will be a dine and discussion event on Tigard Home on June 18th at 5:00 PM at Universal Plaza. It looks like it'll be a really great event to contribute to, for community members to contribute to shaping walkable neighborhoods in Tigard. And I encourage any and all interested parties to participate. On June 9th, I attended a meeting of the Urban Renewal Funding Selection Subcommittee with Counselor Who. The subcommittee reviewed the current grant applications and suggested ways to clarify the grant's goals and improve the applications to better evaluate if applicants support those goals. Currently have, I think, three or four separate applications, so we're trying to consolidate them down to one if possible. And this conversation will continue into July. On June 10th, I attended a meeting of the Willamette River Water Coalition. In keeping with the officer rotation schedule, I was elected chair of this board for fiscal year 2026. The board also received some general updates from its general manager at this brief meeting. And the next meeting will be in October. And then also I attended the joint meeting as the alternate for the Town Center Advisory Commission with Counselor Who and Counselor Shaw. And that trail system plan was very interesting and I'm looking forward to it coming up in the next few weeks. Those are my updates. Thank you.
I would like to thank Counselor Who for attending the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. And I said when I was out of state, the only other thing that I did this month was Metro Area Communication Commission, which ended up with the election of counselors and we reviewed and maintained the budget.
Thank you. For the Region One Act, we got a summer construction update and on their transit series, planning for transit service in rural and urban areas of Region One. Region One is sort of stranger in the state because parts of it are in metro, parts of it are in trimester, parts of it are very, very urban, parts of it are very suburban, parts of it are very rural. There's a lot going on in Region One. And so to accurately understand what is going on, we talk a lot about the different types of needs that there are. For W, Washington County Coordinating Committee, we received Metro's Comprehensive Climate Plan Update, really talking about building energy, food reductions for our region is the focus. And we had our FFA RFA Step One and Step Two discussion on what we would support for the packages moving forward. It was exciting that Washington County Coordinating Committee stood behind Tigard. There is one package in which the North Dakota Bridge is listed. And recognizing the importance to Tigard, Washington County stood behind recommending the package that included our bridge. So if you get the opportunity, please advocate to J-PAC for Package Three, which is the only package that takes community comments into consideration. We also talked about a legislative update. I talked about WCCLS, the Continued Findings and Recommendations, and that discussion has continued with the Board of Commissioners on how to move forward. There were two meetings for J-PAC, one in the May special meeting. It was actually quite interesting, the RFFA Step A bond candidates, each of the projects got airtime and went through to understand. So if you're wondering what those projects are, that's a good one to watch. The June meeting, we talked about 82nd Avenue and TV Highway Local Alternatives, RFFA Step One Bond Discussion. I hope you're sensing a theme around RFA. And the U.S. Department of Transportation Certification Review. There's a really robust discussion going on on J-PAC of what the membership should look like and what the voting structure should be, which around the country, there is no real consensus or normalcy. They're, they're all, the MPOs are all very different. And there's just a general discussion on the appropriateness of having transit there and voting versus elected officials and voting and what is the right balance to serve transportation needs in our region. For MMC, we just had weekly meetings talking- For MMC, we just had weekly meetings talking about legislative work, and SHS continues to be a discussion topic. For the Mayor's Institute on Pedestrian Safety, it actually was incredibly fascinating. Charles Marhohn from Strong Towns came and gave us a presentation around centering street safety, and then one on crash analysis, which helped to sort of spur my questions kind of also around Gardie. For fatal crashes, there's really speed and complexity, and the fascinating thing that he talked about is there was a graph around traffic congestion and traffic fatalities, and there is an assumption that we have less fatalities because streets and traffic got safer, but it's actually, they believe it's more around the fact that there's more congestion, so at slower speeds, there's less fatalities. And it was something that became very apparent during the pandemic when there was less traffic and more deaths. So it really talked about that, which was a fascinating way to think about it. We're like, roads got safer. It's like, no, turns out they just got congested. So it's really been a fascinating experience to participate, and Tiffany is participating with me. For U.S. Conference of Mayors, we had a meeting with mayors across the country, and we heard directly from the mayor of LA and the mayor of Nashville to hear updates about what's going on the ground with them, which was important to hear. I think you hear some stuff in the news, but hearing directly from the mayor is always really helpful. And then just the League of Oregon Cities just continue weekly to have legislative updates and to provide guidance for that. I also testified at the Legislature in Salem for the transportation package and advocated for Great Streets, which is the funding package to get Hall Boulevard over the finish line. So if you feel inclined to do so, please contact your state representative and talk to them about how important the transportation package is and specifically supporting Great Streets. I think that's it. The only other thing I wanted to say is we don't really have a city manager report today, and so I just wanted to thank the city of Tigard and the Tigard-Twallaton School District for a really wonderful Juneteenth event, which I think it just, it was really excellent, and community was recognized, and KGW did a short thing on it. I think it's the fourth annual, and I look forward to it continuing to get bigger and better every year. Does anyone have any questions or additional comments? All right. We will move on to a public hearing to adopt 2026 fees and charges. There is one slide, I believe, that is ready to come up, and I will open the public hearing. Anyone who wants to testify by phone or video, please call in now to get into the queue or log in. The phone number is 503-966-4101. And if you'd like to testify in person, there is a sign-up sheet at the back of the room. And we have Finance Director Kang to present the staff report. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Eric Kang, Finance Director for the record. And just give me one moment while I pull up some information here. I am pleased to be here this evening to go through a series of agenda items. That is a culmination of work across many teammates, community members, and council. Staff started preparing the budget back in October 2024, and this was first shared with the public in mid-April. And we had our first budget committee back in April 26th, on April 26th, where we had the proposed budget discussion and was presented to the committee. Then on May 12th, we had our second meeting to go over the proposed TCDA budget and the proposed fees and charges, which is the first item on the agenda today for the budget items. Then on May 19th, we had our final budget committee meeting where we had the budget committee vote, where the budget committee voted to approve the proposed budget. And then before I get into the business items for tonight, I did want to personally thank everyone that has been involved in crafting the fiscal year 26 budget. Specifically, I want to thank all the community members that were on the budget committee and the time that they dedicated to deliberate on the budget, and the community members that provided public comment. Our city budget is better when community voices are involved. I want to thank council for your leadership and direction. And lastly, I want to thank our budget team, Klyna, James, and Lindsay for the countless number of hours of developing the budget. And lastly, I want to thank our department leaders and our city staff for their collaboration and their thoughtful contributions to the budget. And so tonight, we bring before you following actions that are legally required to be adopted before June 30th, 2025. And to start off, I'll ask to go over to the next slide, please. These are the dates that I just went over. Next slide, please. One more slide. And one more slide. All right. So again, to start off, we are presenting the fees and charges schedule for fiscal year 26. So we have provided a summary of changes to the fees and charges schedule in the agenda packet for tonight. Some of the key items I want to highlight is that all the city fees and charges are indexed to some sort of inflationary factor or a rate study, and we are seeing a normalization of inflation back to historic norms as we discussed back on May 12th. As you can see by the indices, for example, CPI U West is at 2.8%, which is down from the unprecedented inflationary period where you saw 4% upwards to 8% over the last couple years. Additionally, you're also seeing the Seattle Construction Cost Index down at 2.56%, which is down from 3.7 from the prior year, and the Oregon Monthly Asphalt Cement Material Price Index had a decrease in the index from the prior year. One recent change since we last discussed the fees and charges with the budget committee is the rate proposal from Clean Water Services. Previously, the Clean Water Services Board had provided direction to their staff for a 4% rate increase. However, as of, I believe about a week ago, they have reduced their rate increase to I want to emphasize that the rate increases that are proposed are intended to preserve the revenue streams at their current levels as they are tied to inflationary indices and not necessarily to increase expanded service levels. And so with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We did not receive any written comments by noon on Monday. Mr. Vang, are there any callers in the queue or anyone wishing to testify by video today?
No callers.
City Recorder Crager, has anyone signed up for in-person?
No one signed up to speak.
Okay. Thank you so much. City Council, are there any questions directly for this item before we close the public hearing? Yeah, Councilor Robbins?
Regarding, thank you, thank you, Mayor, and thank you Finance Director Kang for being here to answer our questions, and thank you to my mic for working. Regarding the fee increase that is a little bit lower than it was initially proposed, but still the fee increase for Clean Water Services, do we have a choice in that? Can we refuse that fee increase?
I might ask City Attorney Rahala or any of our other teammates who might be more familiar with our IGA with Clean Water Services on what our options are, but we are bound by the terms of our IGA with Clean Water Services, and so the amount that the city would have to pay to Clean Water Services for their, for the use of the sewer systems would not change.
Thank you. City Attorney Rahala?
I haven't reviewed the IGA in a while, but it's my understanding that we are bound by all the fees that they set, both for this and all of the other services they provide.
Director Rager, welcome.
Approaching with confidence.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, Council. Short answer is no. We cannot refuse it. We have, we have a longstanding IGA in relationship with Clean Water Services. That IGA spells out what they handle as part of the regional program versus what we handle at the local level. So they, you know, I think they do their, their due diligence to review what it takes to handle the regional program, which includes all the treatment and the large pipe conveyance that we don't have to handle. So, yeah, that's, that's really how it shakes out.
Thank you. Any additional questions, Councilor Shaw?
Not necessarily a question, but we say IGA, and that's intergovernmental agreement, just so those who are watching.
That is correct, yes.
Yeah. Council President Wolf?
Thank you all. And Director Rager, I guess my question is, clearly, the drop in fee is very recent. Any explanation that went along with their ability to reduce that fee by a point?
I don't have that information. I'm not sure if that was shared with our finance department, but I don't have it with me.
Yeah, unfortunately, the information that was provided was by the CFO from Clean Water Services about the rate increases or the rate decrease, or the proposed decrease to the rate increase. So I apologize. But further explanation on that was not provided, but I'm happy to follow up and reach out to Clean Water Services to see if we can get more information.
I would appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. I will close the public hearing. With that, I will say, I think when Commissioner Snyder comes back, or we can ask Clean Water Services Board to come to city council in the future, and so we will make sure to, because I believe there's an investigation going on and all those sorts of things, so I'm sure we will get a final report of all of that. We will move on to council consideration of Resolution 25-20. Are there questions, comments? And again, this is around the city's fees and charges schedule for, for anyone watching. Councilor Hu?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to follow up on the point you raised during our budget, budget committee discussion about keeping raised our park fee and street maintenance fees and how our park maintenance fee is becoming more and more, becoming more and more, becoming a larger portion of what the city rely on for park maintenance. So I'm not opposed to the current fee schedule right now, but I just would like to encourage the city and the council to, to think about starting, I think maybe the July 1st presentation about the trail maintenance thing, we'll start discussing about how our community really want to fund park, you know, is, do we really start going down this pathway of just raising fees all the time, rely more and more on fees, because fees are not subject to voter approval, right? So I think we, we need to have a more meaningful conversation with our community member about what kind of service level do they want to see in terms of park and trails and how they're, they, we should fund it. So that's all I want to say. With that, I move to approve Resolution Number 25-20.
I would like to second the motion, and I support Councilor Hu's suggestion to revisit that fee sometime in the next fiscal year.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. So I just want to continue the discussion, and I think it's important context to understand the pressures that 5 and 50 have put on not just cities, but counties and school districts across the state of Oregon that requires bonds and levies and fees and charges for government entities to be able to continue to do the work and provide a service level. I do want to say there is a bill, I believe, that has been passed or will be passed to look into measures 5 and 50 because our funding system is broken, and this is a very real conversation that we're having on how to provide the services that our community is looking for. So look forward to the continued discussion, and it's something that the League of Oregon Cities is working hard on and something that we will be robustly involved in as that conversation at the state legislature continues to move forward. So also, just wanted to say that out loud for community members who may be watching and to help them maybe understand, maybe we can do a 5 and 50 101 for our community to really help talk about that conversation. Is there any additional discussion? All right. Seeing none, will the city recorder please read the number and title of the resolution?
Resolution Number 25-20, a resolution amending the citywide fees and charges schedule, which was adopted under Resolution Number 24-14 and subsequent amendments.
Thank you. All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Resolution 25-20 is adopted by unanimous vote of the council. We will now move on to the public hearing on certifying that the city of Tigard provides services qualifying for state shared revenues. I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify by phone or video, please call in now or log in to get into the queue. The phone number is 503-966-4101. Anyone wishing to comment in person, there is a sign-up sheet at the entrance of the room. Welcome back, Finance Director Kang.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. For this next item, if we can go off to the next slide, oh, we already got to the next slide. If we could go back, actually. Okay. For this next item, staff is recommending to council to pass a resolution certifying that the city provides six of the seven required services to be eligible to receive state revenue sharing as outlined by Oregon Revised Statute. Staff confirms that the city provides the following six services listed and is eligible to receive state revenue sharing, which include police protection, street construction, maintenance, and lighting, sanitary sewers, stormwater sewers, planning, zoning, and subdivision control, and water utility. And that concludes my remarks, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. There were no written comments received by noon on Monday. Mr. Vang, are there any phone callers in the queue or anyone wishing to testify by video today?
No callers.
Thank you. City Recorder Crager, has anyone signed up to testify in person?
No, they have not.
All right. Thank you so much. City Council, are there any questions for the public hearing before we go into deliberation? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and now we have council consideration of Resolution 25-21. Councilor Shaw?
I move to approve Resolution Number 25-21 to ensure these important services continue.
I would like to second the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right. Will the city recorder please read the number and title of the resolution?
Resolution Number 25-21, a resolution certifying that the state of Tigard, that the city of Tigard provides services qualifying for state shared revenues.
Thank you. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the Resolution 25-21 is adopted by unanimous vote of the council. Thank you. We will move on to the public hearing to declare the city's election to receive state revenue sharing. I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify by phone or video, please call in now or log in to get into the queue. The phone number is 503-966-4101. Finance Director Kang, welcome.
All right, thank you. If we could stay on the same slide. So for this next item, related to the last resolution, staff is asking council to approve a resolution to now accept state revenue sharing, with the distinction from the last topic was to certify the city's eligible. Staff is forecasting that the state revenue sharing will be approximately $725,000 in the fiscal year 26 budget. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Vang, are there any phone callers in the queue or anyone wishing to testify by video today?
No, there aren't any.
Thank you. City Recorder Crager, has anyone signed up to speak in person?
No.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council for the public hearing before we move on to deliberation? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. This is all very procedural today, and just so you know, these are things that we have to go through, and we have to be very strict about it in order to do the money thing right. So the public hearing is now closed, and we have council consideration of Resolution Number 25-22. Counselor, sorry, Counselor Shuck, you looked like you were moving for it.
Yeah, it's always sort of a game, seeing who gets there first. Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 25-22.
I'll second the motion. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the city recorder please read the number and title of the resolution?
Resolution 25-22, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenue sharing.
Thank you. All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, Resolution 25-22 is adopted by unanimous vote of the council. Our next item is a public hearing on adopting the budget, making appropriations, and declaring the ad valorem tax levy and classifying the levy as provided. I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify by phone or video, please Anyone wishing to testify by phone or video, please call in or log in now to get into the queue. The phone number is 503-966-4101. And anyone wishing to testify in person, there is a sign up sheet at the entrance of the room. Finance Director Kang.
All right, thank you, Mayor and councilors. If we can move on to the next slide, please. So this is the most substantive topic for tonight, which is the adoption of the fiscal year 2026 budget. No changes have been proposed since the budget approval meeting on May 19th. The Budget Committee approved the proposed budget with technical adjustments, which comes to a total appropriations of $240,516,265, with a total FTE of 364.4. Staff is recommending to council to pass a resolution that would set the total appropriations as outlined in Exhibit A in an ad valorem tax rate of $2.5131 per 1,000 of assessed value for the permanent rate, an additional 29 cents per 1,000 of assessed value for the local option levy, and levy taxes for debt service on general obligation bonds in the amount of $2,587,000. Since the Budget Committee hearing, we received a number of questions from council that staff has prepared responses to. Happy to further elaborate on the prepared responses or answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Wang, are there any phone callers in the queue or anyone wishing to testify by video?
There are none.
City Recorder Crager, has anyone signed up for comments in person?
No, we have none.
Thank you so much. City Council, are there any questions for the public hearing before we move on to consideration? Counselor who?
Thank you, Mayor. I think during our discussion for the grants and analysis position, it was discussed that there were several current city teammate doing part of that job. But when, I forgot who asked who, it was asked, so if you add those times together for doing that position collectively, how many FTE would that be? And I remember the answer is 0.5 FTE. Has that answer changed? If you add all those people, doing people collectively doing the job, is it still 0.5 FTE?
On an ongoing basis, it's kind of difficult to estimate exactly what that number is going to be. I think that was kind of a off the cuff estimation at the time. From my, it has peaks and flows as far as the number of grants and when they come in. But initially, the idea would be for this individual to establish, for this position to establish a program to centralize and build the infrastructure so that the city is prepared and ready for the grants when they are coming. And ensure that we have the infrastructure in place to handle things like reporting, and then oversight, and then training on the federal compliance requirements, and just having that single point of contact.
Thank you. And my second question is, I just received a job description for the grant analysis position today, so thank you for that. And one of the qualification number five is ability to interpret and apply applicable rule, regulation, policy, and procedures, and analyze situation accurately to adopt effective course of action required. That's what I, as a lawyer, been doing for 20 years. So you are thinking about hiring somebody with a bachelor's degree with three to five years of accounting experience to do something that I personally think a lawyer should do. So I just don't understand how somebody like that would be able to do this job by interpreting law. Maybe I'm defending my territory as a lawyer, but I just don't like it when a job description is a ability to interpret and apply law is done by somebody who is not a lawyer. So can you answer that?
So I will provide my perspective, and I would welcome any teammates to provide their perspective. So one thing I would caveat is that that job description is not final. So our HR director would have to finalize that job description. And the other thing is, our teammates interpret laws all the time, but they are not attorneys in giving legal advice. And so that is kind of where I would put the distinction and how would, how we would delineate between an attorney versus our staff who is responsible for interpreting law on a regular basis.
Good evening, council. Deputy City Manager Emily Trich joining this evening. I was going to offer a similar comment as Finance Director Kang, which is that professional teammates are often interpreting policy and making decisions on applicability, and of course, always verifying with our astute city attorney. An example came up in an earmark we received from Congresswoman Salinas for funding for the library HVAC program. The funding was going to come from US HUD. And so we had to try to interpret the rules around, I forget the acronym, Joe. BABA, thank you. Buy America, Build America. And so there was quite a bit of vetting and processing information, but it was largely a coordination function. So it was going back and forth between the HUD group, CFM, our advocates, the city attorney, our, a lot of it is just piecing things together. So it's not so much, though it's fancy language used in the job description, the role isn't making any sort of legal determinations or recommendations, but it's trying to find a pathway amid what you might imagine as really chaotic, confusing paperwork. So it's a lot of that. It is, I believe, a coordinator or an analyst function, and we can ensure to use more accessible language when we post.
Are there any additional questions for the public hearing? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open it up to council deliberation. Any quick, Counselor Schlag?
Thank you, Mayor. If you and the council will allow, I'd like to make a few remarks on the approved budget for fiscal year 2026. As I always say, my favorite season is budget season. First, I'd like to give a huge thanks to our finance team. In particular, I'd like to thank Eric Kang, Kalina Plath, Keith McClung, James Kennedy, and Lindsay Bartholomew. Preparing a budget is a Herculean task, and you all are the best in the business, in my opinion. I'd like to thank our leadership team, I see some of them here today, who contributed to the development of this budget and answered the Budget Committee's many, many questions. And of course, I'd like to thank our seven community budget committee members for their engagement during this budget process. They attended many long, detailed meetings, and their input was invaluable for making the budget what it is today. And of course, I'd like to thank the four individuals who served as our budget officers during this budget cycle, Steve Reimer, Rob Drake, Emily Trich, and Brent Stockwell. This was certainly a unique budget cycle from that perspective. But in the words of Homer Simpson in The Shining parody, "Well, it was a long trip, but we're almost there." While I recognize my colleagues may have some questions over some line items in the budget, I will be voting to adopt the budget tonight because I support its big picture decisions. I support the prudent and proactive decision to cut discretionary spending by 3% across all departments, even though I would have preferred a, personally preferred a 5% or greater cut where practicable, as well as greater cuts to the mayor and council's budgets, so we could better lead by example. I support the measures taken to implement our council goals on housing, economic development, community livability, and facilities management. In particular, I look forward to the development of a comprehensive economic development strategy over the next year that helps boost our local economy, as well as a 20-year facility system plan that meets the evolving needs of our community. Let me be clear, I have full confidence in the city's financial management and long-term fiscal health. Supporting this budget reflects that confidence and helps maintain our city's strong financial reputation, which is critical when we ask the community to invest in our future through bonds and other funding measures. I recognize that some of my colleagues had some points of interest that were raised during the Budget Committee meetings, such as revisiting the parks and recreation fee and a desire for more public artwork in our TIF districts. I support further discussions on these matters, and I encourage my colleagues to use their prerogative to raise agenda items on these matters at future meetings of the City Council and TCDA Board. For what it's worth, I have a point of interest I'd like to suggest for the next fiscal year. I'd like to go a bit further than just talking about the parks and recreation fee and have a more comprehensive review of the city's revenue sources. My goal would be to sort of assess what our reliance is on the community, on calling upon the community savings to fund basic services, and hopefully maybe streamline some of those sources and find ways to reduce some of the burden on residents and businesses that we have, especially considering the challenging cost of living times that we are in. And I look forward to having that discussion, hopefully, at a future point. So overall, colleagues, I believe the approved budget for fiscal year 2026 is the right's next step toward making Tigard a great place to run your business, walk your dog, and raise your kids. Yes, I'm still using that line. I urge its adoption. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Schlag. Counselor who?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Schlag. And I totally agree, I want to express my deep appreciation for city teammate for this very hard work. And I also, I do not want to take away anything he said about trusting teammates. I think my fundamental issue, having gone through three years of this, is, let's just put an example, I was talking to a fellow city counselor in a neighboring city, I forgot which one, I talked to so many of them. They were talking about, they had a whole day meeting with their departmental heads or directors or police chief, and they actually talked about the position that they are thinking about adding, the position they are about, you know, deleting. And I really appreciate all the meeting we went through, like whole day Saturday meeting. But to me personally, I feel like I was talked to that entire Saturday. I don't feel like I have that deep conversation with the police chief or Director Byron Rager about, you know, how you derive your budget? How does your addition or deletion actually, you know, fulfill council goal, align with council goal? And I talked with City Manager Stockwell about it, and he's not making any promises, but I sense there's a sense of a willingness to address my concern that I think Budget Committee member and our council member should have a deeper conversation or involvement in how, you know, you mentioned you developed this budget in October. I wish we would start earlier than April and having conversation with different departmental heads and say, "Why are you thinking? Why are you thinking this way?" And so, so I'm not taking away anything that Counselor Schlag said about hard work. I totally believe hard work, and I trust your professional judgment completely. But I just wish that I personally could get a little bit more involved in the process, so I can get a deeper understanding. So there's no secret, I'm still very torn about this grant analyst position, because I wish we have, we have this conversation from the very beginning, maybe in January. So I would not have received a job description today. And so I'm, I'm still torn. I have many concerns. I look at the Excel spreadsheet you sent to me about all the grant we are receiving, but the only, I mean, at the federal level, I really don't know. Even if you say high confidence, who knows, you know? Are we going to get it? The grant? I don't know. So bottom line, if we approve this grant analysis position, $168,755, I understand those are not directly coming out of the general fund, but those are the money that will be taken away from the grant money we receive. And so for that reason, I think my preference is that we will table this grant analysis, analyst, sorry, position, maybe come back, we can talk about it more and come back as a supplemental budget item. I'm not fundamentally opposed to it. But right now, I just don't think I have enough information for me to say, yes, we need to. I understand the urgency and importance, but I, for that reason, I do not support that position as of right now. So not taking away anything Counselor Schlag just said, but I just want to express my concern. You know, after doing this for three years. So hopefully, we'll continue to get more involved in the budgeting process. So sorry for the long rant.
Yeah?
Thank you. We definitely appreciate the feedback. The longer the rant, the better, by all means. I wanted to share, so in addition to the list of grants that we had provided, I also wanted to share what we learned today that, so we have two capital construction requests being heard at the state legislature, and we hope to hear on Friday whether the city of Tigard will be awarding, awarded some of those funds. We requested on the order of $500,000 to $3 million. If we get any of that money, a few of our teammates are going to be beyond capacity. It's, just speaking as a supervisor and a teammate, I find it challenging to ask my teammates to continue to work long hours, including in the evenings and the weekends. And that's not for lack of planning or programming their time well. It's because of the number of contracts, accounting work, agreements, and other activities that are currently borne by our current teammates. We do a lot of work, quite extensive exercises, before we come before you asking for an FTE. And we have to justify it to each other. And we haven't invited council to these meetings, maybe that's something we can do in the future. But leadership team members, directors, present and talk about their requests to each other. And we can be our harshest questioners, as well as allies, because that general fund request means I'm not getting this general fund request. And so there's quite a degree of discipline. So I just wanted to make that note, fully hear what you're saying, and we'll support, of course, and go whatever direction you choose. I just wanted to recognize that there are some additional grants on the horizon, and our team is stretched quite thin. Thanks.
Thank you. I just want to talk a little bit about what Counselor Who said about being more involved. And what I will say is, six and a half years ago, when I started, I was shocked. I was the EMU Budget Chair at University of Oregon, and we had a very engaging process. And I came here, and it felt like sort of the expectation was for us to rubber stamp the budget and go. And I've advocated for the last six and a half years, and the process has evolved as a direct result of my advocacy. It's why we meet quarterly now with the Budget Committee and continue to have that. So I hope we continue to evolve and get to the point where we feel more integrated. It's a special circumstance, knowing that the budget, what is it, the budget manager? Is that, the budget manager lies with the city manager in state statute, I believe. But understanding, the budget officer, that's what it is. Thank you, the budget officer. But understanding that our community wants to be involved and have a deeper understanding. I hope we continue to evolve that process and maybe kick it off a little earlier, having these more in-depth discussions. Because I think we also have a lot of Mullers, myself included, that sort of, you know, after the all-day meeting, sort of sit with it and continue to have questions and feel like it's sort of a rushed process. So maybe we can continue to evolve this conversation. Yeah, Council President Wolf, and, okay.
I will be brief. Williams here tonight, and we sat by each other at our last budget full committee. And I share that because after the conversation around this position was presented and deliberated, you know, in a great conversation, he and I both felt like what we heard is that staff conversation, that people are stretched thin, these are added layers. So I look at this as one FTE out of almost 365 that's needed to consolidate, coordinate, and do that work. Build muscle, might even have an opportunity to give you insight into following law of government grants. And I wholeheartedly support the need. And I guess, to Counselor Who's request, I would shift it to say, I wholeheartedly support it. What I'd like to is add an accountability component. Come back, tell us how this resource has impacted maybe 10 staff members, because now it's been consolidated. What value have they provided to the city in delivering the needs of grant requests or the write-ups and all those components? So I completely support the position, and didn't mean to put you on the spot, Wayne, but it was an important conversation and a very thoughtful deliberation that we had at the budget meeting. So thank you. And thank you, Counselor Schlag. I will not add to that. So thank you.
Counselor Shaw?
Thank you. And I was going to follow Council President's lead. I too support the position. I think it makes much sense from an efficiency standpoint, ensures that those teammates can do the work that they're supposed to be doing and not have an added, additional responsibility that may, they may not have known about when they started, or even that week, because these grants do come. And oftentimes, as you know, Counselor Who, we cannot determine when those will be, though we'd like to see them if we could monthly. Hopefully, the federal government's taking note. But with that, I too want to thank staff. I think it's a very strong financial budget, very appreciative of all the hard work that went into this. I too appreciate the 3% cut. I don't, I think we were judicious, and I think we are well set for the next year. So thank you very much.
Counselor, could you see any comments? I just wanted to provide the
Councilor, could you see any comments? Just wanted to provide the opportunity for everyone. I want to appreciate the conversation. I think we had many robust conversations, and I think it's all coming from a good place of wanting to be fiscally responsible and provide for our community. So, thank you to our community members for the deliberation who participated on their Saturdays and several Monday evenings with us. Thank you to any community members who were watching along and engaged with our team during the process and asked us questions as well. Yeah, and thank you to the city staff. It certainly was, I don't want to call it rocky, but like, it wasn't, I think, as consistent as previous years. There was a lot of different things thrown at you. Thank you to all the budget officers along the way. I would wonder if that's a record, maybe, for a city, how many to go through for this a lot? So, any additional questions or comments? Councilor Schlag?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues for the robust discussion this evening. And considering all of that, I move to approve Resolution Number 25-23.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilor who?
I support Council President Wolf's suggestion of that accountability part, because I'm really torn, still very torn about this position, but I feel comfortable if the staff can make a note to come back and tell us about how this position is working out. Because as Mayor mentioned, we all want to be fiscally responsible. And for every yes vote I cast, I want to be able to explain to Tiger voter months from now why I voted yes. And I think the accountability part pushed me over the line. So, thank you.
Any additional comments? Okay. Seeing none, will the city recorder read the number and title of the resolution?
Resolution Number 25-23, a resolution of the City of Tigard adopting the approved budget with adjustments, making appropriations, declaring the ad valorem tax levy, and classifying the levy as provided by ORS 310 0602 for the fiscal year 2026.
Thank you. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 25-23 is adopted by unanimous vote of the council. That's a big deal. Congratulations. I will now convene the Town Center Development Agency. And we will have the TCDA hearing on adoption of the TCDA fiscal year 26 budget with adjustments, making appropriations, and imposing and categorizing taxes. I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify by phone or video, please call in now or log in to get into the queue. The phone number is 503-966-4101. Anyone wishing to testify in person, there is a sign-up sheet at the entrance of the room. Welcome Finance Director Kang.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and, or TCDA board members, or Chair and Board members. The next item for this evening, if we can move on, actually, no, let's keep on the same slide, please, is the adoption of the Town Center Development Agency budget. As I mentioned earlier, the Town Center Development Agency Budget Committee met on May 12 to review the proposed budget for the agency, and voted to approve the agency's budget on May 19. Staff is recommending the Town Center Development Agency Board to approve the resolution setting total appropriations as outlined in Exhibit A in the amount of $8,305,096. Relevant, but not directly related to staff's recommendation, I do want to point out that staff will be returning early in the fiscal year with a supplemental budget request to adjust the TCDA's budget to account for the acquisition of the property on the former cinema site within the Tiger Triangle. With council taking action on approving the purchase just a few weeks ago, the short-term time window was not feasible to adjust the budget within that time period. However, I don't expect this to cause any sort of disruption in the process for acquiring that property. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr., there were no written public comments received by noon on Monday. Mr. Vang, are there any callers in the queue, or anyone wishing to testify by video today?
No callers.
Thank you. City Recorder Crager, has anyone signed up in person? Thank you. Are there any directors who would like to ask any questions in the public hearing before we move on to deliberation? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And now, we have the director's consideration of TCDA Resolution Number 25-01. Councilor Shaw? Director Shaw, thank you. Old habits die hard.
Chair, I move to approve TCDA Resolution Number 25-01.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? No? I'll just say, for anyone paying attention, these are our two tax increment financing districts, where we make direct investments back into the city in the downtown area and the Tiger Triangle, and are doing really great things. So, that is what this budget is. Will the city recorder please read the number and title of the resolution?
Resolution, TCDA Resolution Number 25-01, a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget, making appropriations and imposing and categorizing taxes.
Thank you. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? TCDA Resolution 25-01 is adopted by unanimous vote of the board. Thank you. We will now reconvene the city council for the rest of the meeting. And, wait, do you have a new name tag, too? That is so fancy. I don't think we've ever had a city manager change theirs, too.
I've already requested an additional budget officer nameplate, too. Thank you.
Maybe an extra set of cards, too? Excellent. We now have a public hearing to consider resolution to adopt the City of Tigard fiscal year 2025 budget supplemental. I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify by phone or video, please call in now to get into the queue or log in. The phone number is 503-966-4101. Anyone else say that in their head over and over, or is that just me? Anyone wishing to testify in person, there is a sign-up sheet at the front of the room, the entrance. Finance Director Kang, I believe this is your last item tonight. Welcome back.
Thank you for welcoming me back for my last agenda item for the evening. So, if we could go to the next slide, please. I will be going over the supplemental budget requests for the fiscal year 25 budget. Next slide, please. One more slide, please. And then, one more slide. Sorry. Next slide, please. Okay, there you go. So, the first supplemental, so I will be going over the supplemental requests that will amend the fiscal year 25 budget. We've included in the agenda packet information on the different requests that are being brought before you, and I'll be going over in detail on what the supplemental requests are. The first supplemental request is an additional funding request of $25,000 for the Fourth of July event. This amount would be used towards traffic control, event security, and cleanup that wasn't originally expected when the budget was set for the event. And the funding source of this would come from TLT dollars, and it transferred into the general fund. The next two supplemental requests are to close out existing funds. The first one to close out is the Bancroft Debt Service Fund, which may be unfamiliar to our council. But to provide a history lesson, this is a fund that was used as a financing vehicle for local improvement districts to take out loans that were established back in 2002 and 2003. So, the way this fund works is that the city takes out loans using the city's full faith and credit pledge that are then repaid by property owners in the local improvement district. And the debt that was acquired for these local improvement districts funded improvements on 69th Avenue and then on Dartmouth. And since then, all the debt service and assessments to property owners have been completed as of fiscal year 23, so we are actually a couple years behind. And all the remaining funds in the balance is related to interest that accumulated over the last 20 years. And so, staff is recommending transferring the remaining balance to close out the fund into, that is unrestricted, into general fund reserves. For the next closeout is the remaining amount in the Parks Bond Fund, which was previously approved in the original budget to fund the River Terrace Community Park project. When we had originally estimated the amount to close out the fund, the interest earnings on the fund were higher than expected, and then, so therefore, there was a remaining balance after the transfer was made to fund the project. And so, staff is recommending an additional appropriation to close out this fund and use the remaining funds to fund the remainder of the River Terrace Community Park project. The next supplemental request is a technical accounting adjustment related to an accounting pronouncement. We've, this has been brought before during the audit presentation, which is GASP 96. This is related to Tyler software as a service subscription costs. Since we are in a binding non-cancellable contract, this is recognized as a debt on the city's books. So, the city needs budget appropriation to account for debt service payments that are non-cash payments to amortize the liability on the city's books. So, there will be no cash moving for this actual supplemental. The next supplemental adjustment is a one-time refund of $498,681 for funds that were over-accumulated in the insurance fund past the maximum reserve amount. This insurance fund is used to pay for unexpected costs that are not covered by insurance, also for, when they're, typically just for any unexpected insurance costs, or costs are not covered by insurance. And so, because the maximum, it's exceeded its maximum reserve, the staff is recommending that we reallocate these funds back to the funds that originally contributed to the insurance fund. The last request is a transfer of $401,240 of street maintenance fee funds to the gas tax fund. This transfer is to pay for operating costs of two employees and materials and services on the streets team that perform work in the right of way. Overall, the total supplemental requests would increase appropriations for the fiscal year 25 budget by $1,801, sorry, $1,801,053. Oh, my gosh, I apologize.
It's okay. It's been a long night. You're doing great.
$1,801,053 for a total of $307,007,72854 as outlined in Exhibit A. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. There were no written public, or no written comments received by noon on Monday. Mr. Vang, are there any callers in the queue, or anyone wishing to testify by video today?
No callers.
Thank you. City Recorder Crager, has anyone signed up in person?
No, we have none.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions from city councillors before we close the public hearing and move on to consideration? Yeah, Council Robbins?
This has been going on this whole time. I've been turning it off, and now that I want to talk, it's turning off. I just want to make sure I understand, because I think a lot of people will question this who don't have accounting backgrounds, because it sounds like some of these things would be good for us, having money that we could use for something else, like the Bancroft, the Bancroft Debt Service Fund. That's money that is held somewhere, and we can't use it, and now we're going to move it back to the general fund. But then, what you just said about that's increasing expenditures by 1.8 million, I think you said, 1. something million, but so, but isn't that actually giving us money that we can spend for something else?
Correct. For a point of clarification, so when we set the appropriation rates, so when we refer to like, the 1.8 million dollars, that would include things like transfers. So, if we are moving funds from like, the Bancroft Fund to the general fund, that still counts as a new appropriation. So, you have to increase your appropriation by that amount. So, the, in your agenda packet, we have in Exhibit C, how the money moves between the different funds. So, that gives you a more complete picture of what the actual increased expenditures are.
That makes sense. Thank you. So, then, since, between the $369,000, and then, the two that, to me, sound like it's freeing up money and not requiring to pay more, is the closeout of the Bancroft Debt Service Fund and the refunding the interdepartmental insurance fund charges. That's about $800,000. Does that then reduce the amount that we need to get in taxes, or are we just going to have a little bit extra that we'll have for next year? Will it change the tax rate at all, or can we?
That would not change the tax rate. So, the permanent rate does not change as a result of the changes from fund to fund. They would go directly into the city's reserves. And so, typically, for a one-time refunds like this, or, I don't want to call it a windfall, but for unexpected savings, or unexpected transfers from funds that don't need to be tied up, they go into our general fund reserves. And then, those can be used for either one-time costs in the future, or any other, or things like capital expenditures.
Do we, do we ever have the option of using these funds to, you know, we're talking about, living is expensive, and things are going up, and going up, and rates are going up, and, you know, it feels like, like it's this, this rolling boulder that we just can't stop. And here, we have these, these windfalls occasionally, or money freed up. Is there ever the opportunity to use that, or could we look for something like that in the future, or is that just not, not a reasonable question?
And that's certainly a reasonable question. As far as setting your tax levy rate, that happens in Oregon, it's unique, because due to Measure 50, you have your permanent rate, and so, that rate typically does not meet the needs of paying for all the programs that your community's asking for. So, with the city, we have, we rely on fees and charges to make up the difference, and as well as things like franchise fees, specifically in the general fund. So, from a property tax perspective, I, it wouldn't be feasible to reduce property taxes. That being said, for the fiscal year 26 budget, one thing I would point out is that we are making a one-time investment using our reserves for significant capital improvement projects, including the library HVAC system, the roof, and also for the PD-PW facility. And so, if you refer to our, our fund summaries on the general fund, you see a decrease in our fund balance. And so, when you have reserves, you know, there's some discretion involved in how you use those reserves, but typically, one-time revenues should only be used for one-time expenditures.
Thank you. Councilor Schlag, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, it feels kind of odd, two weeks before the end of the fiscal year, to be approving a supplemental budget. But when I read through it, this feels like it's sort of a tidying up exercise. Would that be a fair way to characterize this particular supplemental budget, as opposed to net new expenses?
Correct. Honestly, the only one new, net new expense would be the amount for the Fourth of July event that ended up being more than we had originally expected. But the other items are, as you would characterize, just cleanup items to ensure that the city doesn't have any findings from our audit.
Thank you, everyone. I will close the public hearing. That being said, the additional $25,000 for the drone show, I think we talked about traffic control and security. So, as Councilor Schlag sort of talked about Fourth of July, that is the busiest day for our police officers, who are called in and working overtime, and working extremely hard to answer all of the calls. And we felt it really important that the best use of our officers is actually on the street, and not necessarily providing the traffic control or the security at the Fourth of July. We only have a finite amount of officers, and we wanted them to be responding to your calls, which is why we are which is why we are paying for security and traffic control. So our officers can be out in the city helping our community members. So I just wanted to add that piece of information as well. Is there any other discussion or comments on this resolution? I would entertain a motion. Oh, yeah, Councilor Robbins?
And now it won't turn on. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 2524.
I second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, will the city recorder please read the number and title of the resolution?
Resolution number 25-24. A resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2025 final budget supplemental.
Thank you. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 25-24 is adopted by unanimous vote of the council. Thank you Finance Director Kang and for everyone else who participated in this budgetary process this year. Do you get to go on vacation now?
I will be going on vacation next week.
Excellent. I hope you have a wonderful time. The next item on our agenda is the Tyler Enterprise Permitting and Licensing, the EPL update. And we have Senior Planner Shanks to introduce the item. Welcome.
Mayor, if I could make a, a brief comment here at this point. As you can imagine, we really think thoughtfully about how to plan these agendas and what should go when. And so it's, it's tough when we have a public hearing like this that had all those items and then we have a staff member come in at the very end of the present, meeting to give a presentation. But there was some strategy to that and let me explain why. One of the dangers in the budget process is we think about these only as the dollars and cents. Rather than understanding that every dollar and cent in the budget is either funding a position or funding a contract to improve services for the people of Tigard. And so this is a great opportunity to listen briefly to a work that has been in progress for a very long time. You've heard previously about the other Tyler upgrades. We talk about this because this is a significant improvement that will improve the services to the people that interact with our permitting and licensing areas. So that's the reason for this, that's why we have this at the end. And I'm, it's, it's tough to be the closing act after Finance Director Kang. But here you go. So, thank you.
Well, compared to what just happened, I'm going to be much briefer. So thank you for your time and attention. Good evening, Mayor Lube and city councilors. I actually haven't met all of you yet in person, so it's fun to see all the new faces. My name is Susan Shanks. I'm a senior planner with the Community Development Department here with the city of Tigard. And, but I'm here in a kind of slightly different capacity. As our new city manager was saying just now, it, we have been working to implement various Tyler enterprise modules, systems, whatever you want to call them, for a number of years and EPL is one of them. We're, we're fifth and last and we're going to make it before the end of this fiscal year, which is very exciting. EPL stands for Enterprise Permitting and Licensing, but it actually is more than that and I'll get into that in a little bit. But I just wanted to say that I've actually worked on this project for many years in different capacities. But in my current role, I'm like the change management coordinator or something like that. And, and so my job lately has been to help our various internal and external stakeholders. And you're, you're our stakeholders, our customers are our stakeholders, community residents are our stakeholders, businesses are our stakeholders. We have lots and lots and lots of different kinds of stakeholders in the city that use the permit center services, our code compliance services, our licensing services. So we have lots of stakeholders and I've been working to implement our, our change management plan to help people understand the kinds of changes that are coming, when those changes are happening, how it'll affect them, and also just how it'll benefit them. And there are lots of benefits. So that's my intro. I'll, next slide please. Yeah, Carol. Hi, Carol. Okay, so EPL, I'm just going to stick with the acronym instead of saying the long title. It actually consolidates our permitting services and that includes both our building permitting services and most people understand what that means. You need a permit to build buildings, to put in infrastructure. But actually, I should say, you need permits to build buildings, but you actually need engineering permits to do infrastructure projects, to put in pipes and things like that and to dig up the roads and then put them back together again. Planning services, so land use applications that will be part of this module. Licensing, we have thousands of business licenses in the city of Tigard. We also have other kinds of licenses that we issue in the city. We have some licenses that are not currently in any kind of system that live in file cabinet drawers and we're going to be pulling them into EPL as well. And we also have co-compliance services. And just one note, co-compliance is one of the interesting odd ducks in this series of services that we provide the city in that co-compliance cases will be managed with this new EPL module. But the way that we will basically get those cases is through Tigard Service Request. And you've heard about that in the past, we went online with that. But it actually will allow now our residents, our business owners, whomever, community members to actually say, hey, I think there's a co-compliance issue either with my neighbor or whatnot. So that will now be part of the Tigard Service Request, like lists of things that people can report on and ask, you know, about and, and our co-compliance officer or their backup will actually be reviewing those. And if it truly is a co-compliance case, it'll be brought into EPL and managed because EPL has that capacity, unlike Tigard Service Request, it's just for getting the information from our customers. So just bear that in mind that there's, mostly we're going live with EPL, but there's this other really important function where we're adding some additional functionality to Tigard Service Request, which is already out there. And so one of the, one main reason why we're doing this and why it's going to be such a huge benefit for staff and for all the work that we do behind the scenes is that it's going to replace five different systems that we currently have, most of which don't talk to each other. They're third-party contracts. They, they're not even, like Springbrook was never meant to manage business licenses. So we have a lot of disconnected services right now. And even those customers can go online and do things like request inspection online, they're going into a different system over here and then another system over here. And, and then ultimately, we, we can't pull it together necessarily all in one place. We have difficulty sometimes reporting on certain activities because things are so widespread. And we sometimes even have difficulty, especially with regard to business licenses and then understanding whether or not we need to be looking at permitting something for that business, but is that business licensed? So this will help us talk to each other a lot better. So it's replacing all of these systems, they do all different kinds of things as I've listed here. And again, this can be all under the new Tyler EPL module. Next slide please. So here are the, some of the great things it'll do. And this is just like the highest level shortlist. The new system is, and I've worked in our current system, Acela, which is our main permitting kind of system. This is going to be so much better than that in addition to being like integrated with all these other services. So one of the things that's going to allow us to do is expand our online service opportunities for customers. And, and the, the main, the difference for customers that will be pretty obvious, although it's not happening immediately, is that they'll be, be able to submit any kind of application online. Right now, they're limited in terms of what kinds of applications they can submit online. You actually have to be a licensed contractor. And you can only submit for trade permits, like a plumbing permit, electrical permit, things like that. You can't submit just for a tree permit, for example, to remove a tree. So it's going to allow us to expand our service offerings to the community. It's going to help customers understand and navigate the development process, which is complicated. Building things is, you know, just super complicated and has many, many steps. And one of the things that it does is that it actually has a list of each step in the process. And it's, it's like either gray because you haven't gotten to that step yet or it's red because you haven't, you haven't passed that step. Or it's green because yay, you passed that step. So it'll be a very visual reminder for people to understand, oh, there's 15 things on this list and I'm on step three. And that is for every single application type that's in the system. So that is, all right, really exciting. And then it'll help staff process applications more efficiently and coordinate with others. So one of the main reasons or ways that it'll be doing this is that it is, this system is integrated with Bluebeam. I don't know if anybody's ever heard of Bluebeam, but it's this, great. Somebody's heard of Bluebeam. Bluebeam is a different, it's not a Tyler product, but it is recognized in the industry as just a really important tool. It allows people to review plans, like graphic drawings, construction drawings electronically and mark them up electronically. It compiles comments, it actually can, it does version control. It does a lot of wonderful things and it's super simple and easy to use. And so it's a way for us to be able to coordinate with our partner agencies. Like if the Oregon Department of Transportation needs to look at a certain driveway access that's being proposed on 99W, we can actually now do this digitally. So that's going to be a great benefit, not only with partner agencies, but back and forth with the applicants themselves when we need things to be resubmitted. So that's going to be a huge improvement. And then lastly, this system allows us to better track and report on business activity, development activity and code compliance activity in the city. It has a very robust search and reporting component to it because it has so many data fields that can be searched and manipulated and exported. And we don't have that capability right now. Next slide please. Okay, so I've been talking about EPL, but that probably doesn't, is not going to mean anything to our community. So we've actually rebranded the customer-facing portal for this system as the Community Development Hub, permitting, planning and licensing online services. And again, we, we didn't include co-compliance because this is just going to be the back office system for managing co-compliance cases. Tigard Service Request is going to be the customer-facing component to, to co-compliance cases. So this is inclusive of permitting, planning and licensing. And this is actually, I don't know if you've been around the permit center services lately, but we have a poster and this is just a screenshot of the poster that this is helping us alert customers who are walking into our office, which they do, to say, hey, you know, there's some change coming, talk to staff about this, go online. Actually, we, the latest poster, we have a QR code and the URL on it as well. But this is letting folks know, these are the things that you're going to be able to do online on day one. And pretty exciting, like we're really close to day one. I kind of am burying the lead here, but next Tuesday is our planned go-live date. And we are basically not taking anything away from what customers can do online on day one. Like they can do all these things online, but going to different places. Now they're going to be able to do all these things online in the same place and have the additional kind of functionality and graphic interface that'll be really super helpful for them. And then like over the course of the next six to nine months, we're going to be building out more and more of this portal. Once staff has gotten it kind of under our belts, completely comfortable with it so that we feel like, feel we can then help customers as, as we like kind of build out the system so they can submit all these other applications online. So people will be able to do exactly what they can do now, but they're going to be able to do a lot more in the future. Okay, so I'm not providing a demo tonight of this customer-facing portal because we are in this transition period, the, what they call the cutover period, where we currently, our old systems have been shut off. Our new system is not yet live. And so we have these test sites and, and they're not very stable. So I'm not going to show them to you, but in a week, you can go online yourself and check it out. We want people to register and log into the system. However, there's many things that customer, or anybody can do, a community member can do without even logging in, like just searching records, looking at maps, things like that. So, and I think on, at the end of the staff report that was in your packet, there is a link to basically our internal Community Development Hub page that will have, that has a link that will not go active until next Tuesday, but that's how you can then get into that customer-facing portal. But please let us know if you want us to come back and kind of walk you through it ourselves. We'd be happy to do that. Okay, switching gears just slightly, next slide. Just wanted to give you a brief overview of how we have been kind of going about letting people know about the kinds of changes that are happening and what our goals are. In some ways, it's good to be last. There are benefits. We have definitely learned from the people that came, all the modules that came before us. And so, you know, we, we kind of learned how to kind of help people understand about the kinds of changes that are happening, when they're happening and what kind of information people need. So, you know, our, we have like a series of goals about informing people and building awareness, getting kind of excitement and interest and like excited about change because change can be hard. But also just letting people know like, hey, you really need to know this, you're a current customer, a current, current partner agency, you're going to be doing, interacting with us differently, so you really need to know some stuff. And then we need to educate people how to use the new system. So there's lots of resources on the city's webpage right now, some how-to guides. And we'll be continuing to add to that as we learn where people like need help. What we did in terms of kind of developing this customer awareness campaign is identifying who all our stakeholders are. There are lots of them and I have an entire spreadsheet of just categories of stakeholders. It's quite boggling. We developed a really detailed messaging guide, identified with the help of Design and Communications, all the different ways that would make sense to reach specific groups of customers. Because unlike utility billing, residents are not necessarily our main customers. You all could be customers, but most likely if you're going to be building an accessory dwelling unit, you might hire a contractor and it's the contractor who becomes our kind of direct customer. So we needed to figure out a way to reach out to our customers that both could be our customers in the future, but also not necessarily even Tigard residents. So cityscape and Tiger Times are great ways to reach out to our community members, our residents. But we needed to think outside the box and figure out how to reach those, those other folks. So identifying those stakeholders and then identifying those communication methods was really important. And then of course, creating a detailed schedule as to how we were going to do that. And when we were going to do that, I should say. Next slide please. And so here's just a really high-level list of our customers. Like we kind of had, need to figure out like who our customers were, our, you know, all our different stakeholders and which ones need to just be kind of informed and, you know, kind of kept, you know, aware of what was going on and ones we really needed to like make sure that they knew what was going on and that they were educated about the change that was coming. Next slide please. And then lastly, our methods were diverse. We did a, a lot of emailing, very, very large bulk emails to, again, different groups of stakeholders. We had like, I think, 2,500 contractors in our system alone. And again, they might not have pulled a permit through Tigard in the last year, but again, they, they might get a job in Tigard and, and like not live here, work here, but all of a sudden they have a customer who lives in Tigard and they're like, wow, how do I do business in Tigard? So that was just one small group. We sent out an email to 2,500 people that were just contractors. And we, because we're actually out in the field, we have inspectors, both building inspectors, engineering inspectors that are out in the field. We've been like telling them like, we've got these business cards, talk to your customers, tell them about the change that's coming. So we had a lot of in-person contact, both out in the field as well as the folks that walk into the office. We have done the standard media outlet stuff, including our reader board out there. I don't know if you saw it, it said, June 24th, Community Development Hub, now you know what it is. Now you know what it is. And in some community events and meetings, again, because our community, the residents of Tigard are not necessarily our main customers, those weren't as applicable in this particular case. But in all cases, we are driving everybody towards the website that we had created that gives people the real clear detailed information they need, and then where to access the actual online portal when we're ready to go live. So, that's the website there. It's live, it's embedded into your presentation if you wanted to use that link, or the one that's also at the end of your staff report is live. Next slide. And then lastly, this was a detailed, yet still very high-level, plan that shows, like, the, the way that we were going to engage our customers and when. We kind of did a soft launch where we were just notifying people that were walking through the door, and then we did a much broader, like, launch through all the different things that I just told you about in terms of having people talk to our customers in the field, at the front counter, you know, blast emails and all that kind of stuff. And then, we're like in this, I think, I hope you can read the dates, but these are dates by week. This is really like the tail end of the project. So, we're in the week of June 16th. It's a short week because of June 19th, and, at least holiday work-wise. And we have, like I said, turned off our old system, so those are the two red boxes, and we're almost ready to turn on the new system. So that's the green box. That's what we're aiming for. And then, as I was saying before, we were going to go through these, what they call sprint cycles, where we're going to be implementing, building out more and more and more of the customer-facing portal as we get comfortable with it and, you know, bringing more services online for our customers. And that's all I have, other than if you have any questions of me.
Thank you. This is exciting. Are there questions? Counselor Hu?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Susan, for your presentation. I remember we were working together when I was on the Planning Commission on the Washington Square Regional Plan, so, and then you disappear into Tyler, so...
I know.[1192.83][1192.83](laughter)
So...
Literally.
Literally. So, as, as our city manager pointed out, you know, it's not just an investment in money, but FTE, right? Because we have this great senior planner who is not doing planning work anymore, went to Tyler, and, but the result, the investment, is, is, is worth it, I think. So, thank you for doing the work, and hopefully, after this, you can go back to your senior planning job.
Yes. That'll be lovely.
Yeah, so I have a couple of questions. So, I, I used to be able to pay my business license online, and that was stopped. So, would this system allow me to pay my business license fee online again?
Yep.
Excellent. And also, when I was on the Planning Commission, some neighbor asked me, what's going on in that? What's going...I was, I have to tell them, no, that's, that's, that's either hearing officer or staff review. It doesn't come before Planning Commission. And when I went up to the, look up in the old system, there's no application information online. So you're saying that the public now will be able to look at application of, of development at any given address? Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, there are different ways to search the system. And, yes, it'll be searchable by address, for sure. We also have our existing Tigard Active Permits map, but, which shows you kind of where, and, and we're, which is part of our GIS system now, and it's actually connected to the EPL system as well. So people will be able to see a map, but they'll also be able to, like, say, I want to see all completed inspections, or I want to see all activity at this address. And then they'll be able to see if it's a permit or if it's a land use application. And then they'll be able to see, like, kind of, if it's complete, and we will be, like, we'll actually have documents in the system. We always expired to do that, aspired to do that with Tigard Active Permits, the mapping system, but it was, with laser, it was just too onerous. And this system, because the system will both automatically be generating its own kind of content, we have templates for emails and for different documents, it'll have those in the system, so people will be able to look at that. They'll be able to look at, like, the approved plan set. So it'll make it a lot easier to share that kind of information with community members when they're like, what is going on?
Yeah, I don't know if you remember, when, when I passed you by the hallway a couple years ago, I asked you that question, and you said, maybe, but I'm glad that's coming to fruition, so. And one more question is, you mentioned about, it's great that they will show you the application process, green light, blah, blah, blah. So, my, my experience with my last electrical project is that my electrician failed to tell me I need to do a closed-out inspection. So that was lingering on for years until later on. I was like, oh, it's...so would this new system actually prompt homeowner or, or contractor that you need to do closed-out inspection, or it doesn't do that?
It's not an automatic process. And honestly, because I'm, there's been so much what they call configuration of the system, unlike all the other modules, that are more built out of the box, more usable out of the box. EPL is the reverse. It's like 10% built out of the box, and then we built the remaining 90% because every city is just so different. And so what I can imagine, and I'm just speculating, but that's a really good point that you raised, because that is not uncommon.
I know, yeah. A lot of people, probably a lot of permits not closed out right now, because they just don't realize they need a closed-out inspection.
I think they have it set up to be alerted when something goes past, like, that since six-month mark, and it'll either automatically close it, in which case if, like, it'll be, like, the inspectors will be able to see, like, oh, well, it's getting close to that, and, but that final inspection hasn't happened, and either, like, it needs to be failed and, like, remained open, and like, you know, you would be contacted, or the contractor, whoever, but was the contact person. But I imagine, like, that, and again, I don't know what the building official will do in those situations, but that reports could be run, like, they might want to run it monthly to say, like, which things haven't gone through their final inspection, to stay on top of those things. So I imagine that there's a number of different approaches that they might take.
I know, but if, if possible, I would like to request that you at least look into this automatic prompting system. I don't know if it's even possible, but if it's possible, I think that would be really helpful to Tigard residents who are not aware, after a project, they need to have a closed-out inspection, right? Nobody knows. I didn't know, so...
I didn't know.
So that's a request of mine, if that's possible. So, thank you so much.
I will definitely pass that along, and, and it might be that that's what they are doing, because there's many automations that we are taking advantage of with the system, and that might be one of them, but there's a bazillion details of how we've configured it, and I just can't remember that one exactly.
I have a question. When you're talking about the searchability function, is that for activity now and moving forward, or is that going to include, say, somebody had a permit and they're currently in the middle of building and somebody wanted to check on it? Like, is that going to be in there, or is it just from what happens now forward?
Part of the heavy lift that IT and also the broader EPL team, which is many people, is transferring all of our legacy data over into the new system. It's not going to be perfect because the fields in that system don't map perfectly to the fields in the new system, but we're transferring over all the data because that kind of data is really important for the work that we do. We need to go back and be able to look at things that have happened in the past. And so, both things that are in process, as well as old things, will show up in the system. They might not be a complete record, but it'll have, like, a final status, and it'll have the information that we currently have in the system, at the very least, in some way, shape, or form. So it's, it's everything.
That is an incredibly huge lift, and I hope all of you go on vacation after this also goes live and everything is smooth, because that's also incredible for our community members to be able to see it. And perfection is not what we're searching for, right? Like, with history, but maybe it's enough to be able to, to come in and, and ask a better question. So that's really great. Thank you. Counselor Shaw?
Well, first, congratulations to both you, but also the team, and this has got to just feel like a monumental moment. So, congratulations. Love the rename of the Community Development Hub. Questions? I know she have Spanish on one of the slides, proximante. So, is it coming su proximante? Is it in Spanish, the website, or is it just the communication that you've enabled to also be in Spanish?
The communication that we made is in Spanish, but I am so thrilled to be able to tell you this because this was not part of the system when we started this project years ago, that because the system and how it's configured is baked, it's not part of, like, free-floating website text, and I'm not an IT person, so forgive me. So you know how, like, you could use Google Translate to translate a webpage? Because the fields are baked in and have, you know, back-office relationships, it wasn't, it didn't translate. Like, the Google Translate couldn't reach into those fields and change them, and I just found out it must have been with one of their updates that it does. And you can actually translate all of the fields into, like, kind of like Google Translate, like, any one of, I don't know, 100 and whatever, 200 languages. And I, I just chose Spanish to see, and I was, I don't know how good the translation is, but I was so relieved because I just thought that was a huge, well, oversight or need on the behalf of Tyler, if that was the case. So, so, yes, our communications have been in English and in Spanish. We have flyers and posters, but also we have now many different Spanish media channels that we're utilizing, because we do have a lot of contractors who are Spanish-speaking, and so we really needed to be able to reach those folks, and I'm just thrilled that the system can be translated.[1718.16][1718.16](laughter)
Any additional questions or comments? Well, congratulations and thank you for all the hard work.
Thank, well, and I just want to say, it is a team, a huge team. So, Sally White is out there. She's our project manager, and she's been amazing in getting us to this point. So, and then we have all of our different team leads, I just have to say, from engineering and from planning and from building and from finance. So, it's been a huge team effort.
Can we do a round of applause?
Yeah.[1752.01][1752.01](applause)
Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have any executive session scheduled, and we have completed everything on our agenda, and so we are adjourned. Thank you so much. Good night, Tigard.